All right, go ahead and call this meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the badge of allegiance.
And if City Clerk will please take roll call.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lowe. Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
And Counselor Lowe will be joining us in just a little bit. All right, any changes to final agenda?
A motion to approve agenda is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anybody objections? All right, so final agenda is approved. Moving on to interviews. First up, Mr. Berger. All right, I'd like to welcome you back. So please spend a few minutes to introduce yourself to us. We're interested in hearing highlights of your experience relative to this position and why you are interested in becoming a Squim City Council member.
Uh, yeah, first, thanks for having me back. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to interview again. Uh, over the past year, I've been, uh, looking for opportunities to contribute to Squim's local government and I'm excited to apply for another city council vacancy again. Um, I've lived in Squim for almost seven years. Uh, my wife and I moved to Squim from Kitsap County to buy our first home. Uh, before moving, uh, we took a year to travel the country in our, uh, 11-foot truck camper. And of all the places we traveled, Squim felt like home. Uh, in 2020, I left the workforce to stay at home with my children. Uh, they're now four and one and a half years old. And so currently I'm a stay-at-home parent. Uh, I have an associate's degree in marine science and I have, uh, diverse professional experience. Uh, before leaving the workforce, I worked locally at BRICS Marine, formerly, uh, Armstrong Marine. Prior to that, I worked for over five years at naval base Kitsap Banger as a, uh, private contractor doing, uh, waterfront security. And in that role, I was selected to participate on a leadership team, uh, responsible for strategic planning to improve employee satisfaction and retention. Uh, both in my current role raising my children and in my professional careers, um, I've had a wide range of experience building relationships, working collaboratively with people from diverse backgrounds, uh, leading and participating in teams to work towards common goals and, uh, advocating for productive solutions. Uh, I have experienced living in Squim as a young working person, as a young family, as a parent to young children, born and raised in Squim. Uh, I bought my first house in Squim and I know firsthand what it is like to relocate here. And, um, I enjoy surfing and gardening. I'm passionate about protecting and preserving the natural environment. And I just love living in Squim. I want to help make Squim a place where everyone can have a quality life. Specifically, I want to support and move forward work to improve infrastructure, uh, build more affordable housing, uh, and just prepare city to face challenges of climate change. And, um, I'm here because I believe local government is one of the best opportunities to make meaningful change and positively impact our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kelly. I'm gonna read question two. What is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
Yeah, um, so I want to maintain the things that make Squim a unique and desirable place to live, while also creating opportunities to make this a place where everyone can have a quality life. Uh, my vision for this role is to responsibly represent the community and support developing the city's visions, goals, and priorities, ultimately working to improve Squim's, uh, public services. Um, I would operationalize this vision by working collaboratively with other council members and city employees. Um, I think it's important to trust the experts, listen to public concerns and priorities, and research different policies and creative ideas. Um, I would look at other successful communities and make timely decisions to advance work. And I also recognize that in this role, um, you won't be able to make everybody happy. And I would build trust, uh, even when decisions may be unsatisfactory to certain groups, by thoughtfully considering all viewpoints, not just my own, and just keeping shared goals at the forefront and, uh, being transparent about the decision-making process.
Thank you, and thank you along with Harmony for being willing to put yourself out there like this. So question three, are there any issue areas you are particularly passionate about?
Yeah, there are a few. Um, in particular, I feel passionate about, uh, improving and expanding infrastructure. Um, I feel passionate about ensuring infrastructure is safe, um, and supporting a more walkable community, looking at sidewalks, bike lanes, streetlights, crosswalks, uh, and improving roads for, to, uh, safely address growth. Um, I'm passionate about protecting green and natural spaces, um, and environmental preservation. I would like to see improvement to our local parks and community spaces. Um, I also think it is important to address climate change challenges and ensure water resource adequacy. Um, affordable housing, prioritizing workforce housing, and more opportunities for young families that live here and for other young families to move to Squim. And, uh, positive youth development, so more resources for schools, uh, more technical professional training opportunities for young people in Squim.
How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, welcome opposing viewpoints, and open dialogue?
Yeah, first, I listen to understand, uh, different viewpoints. I believe opposing viewpoints can lead to more creativity and out-of-the-box thinking. Um, I come from a place of compassion and empathy. I allow others to be themselves. I speak respectfully, uh, and I'm comfortable addressing conflicts and open and respectful dialogue. Uh, for example, uh, while on the leadership, uh, planning team, when I worked at the naval base, my role was to act as a liaison between staff and upper management. And so I had to work to find common ground between the experiences and needs of the staff as well as the upper management. And I did this by first listening to each side and speaking respectfully in a way that would resonate with everybody.
Thank you.
Hi, Kelly.
Bye.
Uh, what legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? And how would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with legislators?
So legislative advocacy experience is something I'm still currently seeking. Um, I do have experience advocating for my son who has complex medical needs. And I do think, uh, much of that experience does translate. Um, and I would leverage my, uh, advocacy experience through that by leaning into my strengths, which are being personable, finding common ground, just building relationships to work towards goals. Um, with my son, I built relationships not only with his doctors, uh, but also with the nurses and other care team members as they're the ones who spend the most time with the patient. Um, and they can understand how to best connect with the doctors. And they know how to get messages received in ways that the doctors will understand. And I would take a similar approach with, with, uh, legislatures and work to form relationships with their assistants as well as the legislators themselves. And, uh, as well as lobbyists to support local needs and priorities.
Based on what you know of this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
Yeah, I believe a successful city council member, uh, works as part of a team and is a reliable team member, works to build consensus, um, is respectful of differing opinions and values others' input. And you acknowledge the expertise of city staff and represents community concerns and priorities. Uh, you're willing to learn, research different issues and ask questions, and able to make decisions and move work forward to achieve desired goals and recognizing you aren't going to make everyone happy. And, uh, lastly, I think you need to be open to change.
Thank you, Kelly. Um, question seven, uh, strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relations? What were the key components of your success?
Uh, so in my last interview last year, um, I shared with you all about my son who was born with a congenital heart defect and, uh, how my wife and I built strong relationships with his care team. Um, especially in the first months of his life, uh, he was hospitalized for a prolonged period of time. Um, and we maintain these relationships intentionally over the years, and he's now four. And last May, uh, he had his second hope and heart surgery. And, uh, during his two-week inpatient recovery period, uh, we were visited by uh, many of his nurses and doctors who we worked with previously, who, they just came by to say hi because they remembered us. And, uh, these were people, you know, we hadn't seen in three years, so. And, uh, I think the key components to this success were just clear communication, expressing our opinions, being vulnerable, asking questions, and just valuing the expertise of the care team, and, uh, asking for help when needed. And just learning and leaning into strengths, working together as a team, uh, to support my son's recovery. And just generally being personable and being a nice person goes a long way, I think.
Thank you.
What, excuse me, what issues is our city facing now?
Yeah, um, I think outdated and incomplete infrastructure is a big one. Um, compounded by rapid expansion and population growth. Um, I think there's a lack of affordable, diverse housing, which is also contributing to workforce shortages. Um, I think our schools need more resources and, um, climate change, which is impacting water adequacy.
How do you ensure that your decisions align with our organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
Um, yeah, I think you, just working as part of a larger team, you make a collaborative effort to just work together to move things forward. Um, and you keep the collective visions and goals at the forefront. And you operate with transparency to build trust. Um, since I'm not a current member of the local government, it's hard to identify a specific example. Um, but I am an active member of the community. I vote in every election. I respond to city and community surveys. I find opportunities to share my opinions respectfully and through productive avenues. Uh, specifically, I just voted in support of the special election bond and levy renewal for the schools.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, um, so I recognize that a new council member can change dynamics. Uh, I've selected for this role. What can I do to support both the council and staff in the coming months?
I think one of the biggest ways, I think you could make an immediate impact is on the 24th, we have our council retreat, which will also involve a comprehensive plan. So I think that's going to be a good opportunity to help the city, the council and staff.
My next question was actually about that, so.
Um, I would say because this position has such a steep, steep, steep learning curve, putting a lot of time and effort into learning everything you can really helps. Um, just from experience, I think I'm about four years in, a little over four years, and there's always something new to learn.
There's a lot of resources available online. The Municipal Services Research Center, for one, that's just got fantastic case studies and opinion pieces and, um, reading up on things that are impacting cities, going bills being introduced in the legislature, things like that. Association of Washington Cities has a good website, too.
My other question was about the, uh, plan, comprehensive plan retreat. Just share more details, what that day looks like. What do you hope to see and hear from a new council member on that day?
Take that question one more time for me.
Just, uh, what do you hope to hear and see from a new council member on the, during the comprehensive plan retreat?
I, I would say I would anticipate it'll be a for a new council member, I'd be drinking from a fire hose, um, just coming up to speed with where we're at so far. Um, but we're working with a really great consultant who's really good at, at laying things out and in very accessible forms. So given your background and, and interest, I would guess you'd, you know, you'd come up to speed fairly quickly and, and be able to contribute. But probably the biggest benefit is just to engage and kind of experience the the culture of the team and staff and the consultant and so on.
Cool, thanks.
I think, um, a lot of what you shared in terms of, um, the way you, um, is in question for how you mentioned that you would be listening to understand, you're coming from a place of compassion and empathy, open and respectful dialogue. Um, I think that, um, that's huge. That's the, the bread and butter of what being a city counselor is all about. So, um, thank you for bringing, for sharing that. And, um, if, uh, yeah, I think if you were at that comp plan meeting, um, it would be, um, the, all of those pieces would be coming together for you. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Mr. Day, are you able to hear us?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Not, not a problem. Thank you, sir, for joining us this evening. Do you wanna, just wanna keep going the same, or, okay. All right, Mr. Day, please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us, why you're interested in hearing highlights of your experience, where I've been to this position, and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Not a problem. I'm sorry I couldn't be there. I'm on a vacation that I planned about a year and a half ago in Florida right now. Um, but, uh, But yeah, I'll give you a little history of myself. I graduated high school in 1987. I joined the Air Force. I started out in security police, cross-trained into EOD or bomb disposal. And I did that for a total of 12 years active in reserve. I also joined the Department of Corrections. I was a correctional officer for 28 years. Total, I have over 30 years of law enforcement experience. I was also a activist in the union for corrections. Actually, still an activist because I'm currently a board member on the retired chapter. I got elected to that a year and a half ago. And so I have a total of 28 years of active union representation. I was also a trustee, elected trustee for the Benefit Trust for CCPOA. It's about a half a billion dollar trust. We grew that trust as a trustee. I was the chair for a little while also, I think, four years. I was elected to that for a total of 18 years. I was the longest sitting trustee in the history of the Benefit Trust. But we went from an $80 million trust to almost a half a billion dollar trust, giving medical, dental, and vision benefits for all the correctional officers in the state of California. I also sat on many negotiations, setting up contracts, local negotiations, statewide contracts, statewide negotiations for policies and procedures, going through different policies, procedures, kind of getting a give and take between work and management on what works, what doesn't, given our input, taking their input, finding a happy medium to get that all done. So I have a lot of experience with dealing with that. Also with dealing with budget. Sitting on a trust like that, I learned how to budget money, how to watch how money spent, utilizing it properly, getting the biggest bang for our members, the biggest bang for their dollar. And I would really like to do that with the citizens of Squim. And I think I bring a lot in that aspect. I learned a lot of conflict management skills working in the prison system. Unfortunately, I have had some incidents. I was assaulted five times or six times, I'm sorry. Nothing major, but it's one of those things that comes with working in that environment. I worked with some of the kind of unique individuals, actually dealt with Sirhan Sirhan and Charles Manson at one time. Also, Robert Downey Jr. was in my building for about a year and a half. And it's good to see the people that go through the programs and make it work. And I was always trying to help those inmates get into programs when they left to help them better themselves. We don't get to see a lot of that as correctional officers, unfortunately. So every little win we got, I really took pride in that for helping the inmates better themselves and becoming more productive citizens. I also enjoyed helping the members and fighting for people that technically don't know how to or can't fight for themselves. I've been doing that pretty much my whole life. Been a public servant since I was 18, joining the military, and then following that up with law enforcement and still doing that. Even if I wasn't to get on here, I still always try to help people. I ran our retirement program for the Benefit Trust also. I was the chair for the retirement program for the members. We had 35 employees and I think I had 15 people that were already on the program, setting up 401s. Very, came very in depth on how to deal with that. And I still get phone calls, probably 10 to 15 a month, people getting ready to retire on what to do and how to set stuff up, sorry. I really enjoy doing that. I wish, I wish the schools would show more about compound interest and how that works. And I know I'm rambling right now and I do apologize. I just, I think I bring a lot of experience at dealing with large numbers, dealing with very different individuals and trying to bring them together. Some of the hardest discussions I think I've ever had with either members or inmates is when they come to me with an issue and you tell them, well, the policy is this, or this is what the, the policy is here. And we need to find a better way for this to happen, or you can't do that. That always kills me when I can't help them. But I also understand there's a reason why those policies are there. There's a reason why those procedures are there. And you don't always see it at that point, but when you start looking into stuff, you really realize how that stuff works. So that's a little bit about me. I've been in Squim since, uh, what, now four and a half years? Five years, actually. My daughter's a senior in high school this year, my youngest. Me and my wife both retired. She was in nursing, retired up to Squim. It's a beautiful area. I want to try to help keep it beautiful, keep it safe. I think coming from a law enforcement background, safety and security is the biggest utmost and health, healthcare. I'm, I'm still a big proponent. I would love to see us get a 24-hour emergency medical clinic somehow in Squim. Whether we do it as a city or we work with the tribe to do it. I came from a town that had a tribe and I've seen friends that others were part of the city council and/or the district attorney and how they work with the tribes. I think they're great partners that we could work with. But I think they're that, they're partners. I think we all have to come together as a community and take care of our, our people. We are a retirement community. I want to say the last time I looked at the numbers, it's either 60 or 65% of our community is retirees. So we really have to make sure we take care of them because most of those people are on fixed incomes. And I think that's something that gets forgotten a lot of times with dealing with a lot of the issues that come up in, in politics is the people on fixed income and they've already done their time. They've done their services and we need to respect that as much as possible also. And find ways where we can protect their ability to have a good life like everyone wants.
Thank you, Mr. Day. I just want to keep moving so we can get through all the questions here for you.
No, not a problem.
Yeah.
Sorry, talked so long.
No worries. Hello, Patrick. Thank you so much. Hello. Question number two, what is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
My, my vision is to make us as efficient as a city council and responsive to the needs of our citizens. Try to think outside the box to get ahead of what they're, they may look as what the issues are with talking amongst all of you guys that have that experience of already being there. Always listen to everything, whether I agree with it or not. I think that's the ultimate thing you can do in that position is always listen because sometimes you may not think of something that someone brings up that you may not have thought up because you didn't agree with it. And then all of a sudden you're like, hey, that's actually a good idea and we can make that work within what we were already visualizing. So that, that's kind of my vision is to help the citizens and be responsive to their needs.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for putting yourself out.
Sorry about the background noise. I'm, I'm at a resort right now and I'm trying to get someplace somewhat quiet.
Oh, it must be disturbing you more than us because we're not hearing it. But I, I should ask if you're seeing a clock on your screen, a countdown clock?
Yes, there's 20 minutes left.
Yeah, okay. Just to make sure you know how to manage the time here.
Yes.
Question three, are there any issue areas that you're particularly passionate about?
Um, healthcare is a big one. I do think even though we have the Olympic Medical Center right there in the, in the middle of the night and that with the elderly population that we have, trying to have some emergency medical in the city, I think would be where we can at least stabilize people, I think is one of the utmost things we need to look at. And then safety and security, but we, we don't have the crime that a lot of places do. But I don't think we can lack on safety and security, whether it be police, fire, or paramedics. So I think those are my big areas, I think, that are my concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, welcome opposing viewpoints, and open dialogue?
The one thing I can say is I think just being open, willing to listen to anybody and coming from the union background and always have to, I got called to yards and had to talk to people. And I had people shouting at me times where people around me were like, well, why are you taking that? Because they have a, they have something to say. I have to be respective of them, whether I think they're using proper language or whatever, they still have something to say. I take it in. I look at all the points they bring up, evaluate it based on my knowledge of the circumstances and, and give them the best response I can. I think from a union aspect, I think I bring great skills with that because I've had to do that through incidents, through discipline, because I was the main person that represented discipline. I was a chapter president. So I used to tell people all the time, there are two people that run everything at this institution, me and the warden. And we have to find a happy medium on all of that. And so I had to go and represent people that did stuff and explain to them, okay, this is what happened. Yeah, this is the policy. So I'm, I'm very approachable and I, I take my time to listen, to hear them out before I respond. And if I don't know, I tell them, let me research this. I don't give them an answer off the cuff. I hate to have to, I really hate to have to go back to someone and tell them, oh, you know what? I was wrong about that. But I'm not so proud, I won't. And I think that earns a lot of respect is when you realize you make a mistake, own it and, and try to fix it the best you can.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Day. Question number five is what legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the Squim City Council? And how would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with legislators?
Actually, I sat on my PAC committee in Kings County of California for 12 years. I was the chair for all except two years. And that was because I knew I was retiring, so I put someone else in the chair so they could get the experience. I used to interview people all the time. One of the things we did as a union is we interviewed everybody. We sent out interviews for everybody, I should say. And being open, being willing to talk to both, both sides. I had a lot of experience in that. I was in Sacramento for almost two and a half years doing nothing but negotiations with the state. So I have a lot of experience on sitting down, going through what you're going to be talking about, learning the ins and outs. And the best advice I can give to anybody, when you go into those, those conversations is the one thing I always tried and I learned from one of my mentors was look at the issue, come up with an argument for it, then come up with an argument against it. If you can look at an issue and see both sides where each side will argue on stuff, you make yourself a better negotiator or better conversationist because when they bring up issues, you may have already thought of answers to those issues because you looked at both sides. And I utilize that great because my union used to send me to all the institutions to do negotiations. There isn't one institution I did not go to in my 28 years that I didn't go to and sit at a table, whether it was doing post-inbid, whether it was opening up a new program. And the chapter presidents from those other institutions requested me more than me going out and reaching out to them because they knew I brought a skill set where I could get into the issues even that their own side didn't get into. And I was amazed at how many times I went into conversations and they had not even looked at their own policies. And I knew their policies better than them. So doing your homework in that and learning to fight on both sides of it is what something I'd learned a long time and it's, it's done me well.
Thank you. Based on what you know of this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
Having a heart for the, and passion for the, the city, the citizens. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of job you can do to prepare for, for some roles. Be willing to learn. Be willing to ask if you don't know. Never be afraid to say you don't know. I also learned that in the military. Once I became a supervisor, I was taught and my dad being 30 years in the military also taught early on. Always ask, never be afraid to step up and say you don't know. Be willing to learn. I try to learn something new every day, every day, even to this date. And I'm 56 years old. I always try to learn something new. I instilled that in both my daughters. Like I said, my youngest is a senior. My oldest was, went into the Navy as a nuclear propulsion specialist. And she's actually now working at Livermore Labs when she got out of the Navy. But they've also learned those trades. Never be willing to just take something at face value, research it, ask questions, and make the best decision you can with the information you have available. But also, if you do make a mistake, own your mistakes, step up, try to fix it and move forward. Always move forward.
Thank you so much, Patrick. Question seven, strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relations? What were the key components of your success?
Yeah, one of the biggest things, and actually they have it in the contract now, is something I created. They deleted all of the holiday officers in the prisons in California through cost savings. We used to be able to burn day-to-days. And I sat down with my warden and the head of finance and showed them that the vacation that they got funded for, for that whole institution, they put it out for bid, utilized what people wanted to go and bid on. And then all that extra funding, we could utilize that, turn it around, create day-to-day burns with that funding. So it costs the institution zero additional dollars and we created the holiday positions like we had before. And we found out when we actually, when I sat down and looked at it, that we went from having, because my institution had almost 1,500 correctional officers in it. We are, we were the largest freestanding facility in the United States. We had 34 holiday officers to accommodate all three shifts. And that, when they deleted it, we lost all those. Within one week, we created 32 more holiday positions. And where that helped the institution was without those holiday positions, what they were funding elsewhere statewide is people were utilizing FMLA, calling out sick. And they were still getting hit with almost the exact same number of, because people want time off, especially in high-stress jobs. But when I created that, it cost the institution no additional money. We did not lose except two positions. And within two months, I had institutions calling me. Some of them were accusing me of stealing from the staff until I sat down and explained how we did it. And there was still some money left over at the end if we didn't utilize it. The institution got to use that for offsetting some of the overtime for other issues, incidents and stuff. So by me sitting down initially, the warden didn't even want to hear it till she brought in the finance. We sat down, I, and I was a numbers guy for the union. That's why I went around so much. Really good with numbers, figuring out math in that and especially expenditures. We sat down, we ended up saving probably, because if you pay sick time, you're paying time and a half versus paying holiday time, you're paying straight time. So we probably saved the institution $15 million that first year. And now that became, as soon as we got that done, we, I helped set up three other institutions. Now it's part of our contract for the statewide contract. Every institution in the state has a program that I helped design based on that funding.
Thank you. You've had quite the remarkable career, Patrick. This is very interesting. What issues are, is our city facing now?
Um, who? Like I said, I think one of the big issues I feel that, that we're facing is not having a 24-hour emergency medical. Uh, first is just the ambulance because with the elderly population, especially with my wife being an RN for almost 40 years, um, that is something I think is something that we really need to try to address. I know, uh, the tribe has the Jamestown Clinic. I would love to work with them hand in hand. I would also love to find out if we could get some, uh, grants from the state or federal government to help deal with some of that. I think grant systems, uh, I found with friends that were, are, uh, city council members at other cities, if you can find, uh, as a city, find a good grant writer, they're worth their weight in gold. And, uh, one of my old partners that was a city council member said, the problem is when you really find a good one, bigger cities come along and poach them from you. But, um, grant writers are, um, a super necessity for, uh, cities and mu- municipalities to be able to get the money. Cause there is a ton of money out there for federal and state funds that does not always get used up. And I think that's something we need to look at. But yeah, that emergency medical, I think is a huge one. Um, I, I know some people talk about homeless is a problem. We need to get that fixed, but I think that's a statewide issue that, um, I used to work in a methadone clinic inside the prison. We were the first one in California. Um, I learned a lot. I, I understand the methadone clinic in Squim. I, I really do understand why they need it, but the problem is it's not just a methadone problem. And I've learned this from those counselors. It's a mental health issue also. And I would love, I, I know they're building some mental health facilities there at the methadone clinic. I think that's something that is needed. But I do wish the county would look at adding some mental health facility in the county, on county land, but would still give, provide jobs. Um, but some else real quick. Oh, high-speed internet so we could attract some of these bigger companies out here that because of the internet service sometimes being spotty, I know my daughter talks about the high school internet goes down all the time when they're in the middle of class. I think that's a very high priority we need to look at also, because not only do we help the citizens, we can attract some businesses which help create jobs, which also help feed the economy, give up jobs, which feed all the als, all the other, other small businesses that we have within our community. Um, so those are probably the top three.
How do you ensure that your decisions align with our organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
Ooh, um, well, first I'd have to find out where the organizational goals were. Um, and I'm a, been married myself now for 36 years. Um, I'm one of those that I may not agree, but I can move forward past that. I don't think, because sometimes we're going to have disagreements. I think that's part of life. I think that's one thing, agreeing to disagreeing, moving forward is good, but I think you have to have, show a united support group because if there's infighting in the organization that you're in, people see that and that just, it takes all the credibility away from you. And I don't think you, I think in, when you're in public, you have to show a united front. Um, in private, when you have, we have conversations amongst us in closed session or that, you can speak your mind, but you still have to show a united front. I've seen too many organizations, uh, chapters, uh, down there for the union that they have that infighting. It causes more problems than it helps. Um, something I've done myself, um, probably that holiday, I had so many people upset when they got, did away, when the state did away with the holiday and then, um, people didn't understand how I was able to create it. That chapter presence, I had one good friend, known him for 10 years, that was a chapter president also, called me up because his wife worked at my institution accusing me of stealing vacation time from the, the other officers until I explained to him what I did and why I did it. And it was for the betterment of the whole group. And it was funny because when I finally got done explaining it to him, he's like, hey, do you have that written down? Can you send that to me? I go, yeah, I can do that. And he was one of the institutions I immediately helped implement that program because he, he only got one side of it until he learned the whole aspect of what was going on. Um, I was able to explain it to him, get him to understand. And he was like, okay, now I understand why you did that. So that's probably one of my best examples.
Thank you. Um, our last question is, uh, just about if you have any questions for us?
Um, I, I know a little bit of about what you guys do. Uh, I, I don't get to all of the meetings, but I do listen to all the meetings. I'll go online and, and try to listen to them. Um, I, I think you guys do a, a very good job with what you have, uh, in front of you. I know at one point I was talking to one sergeant when I first moved up here right after COVID and, uh, there, there was a, a pay raise going in for the, the union. And I am very pro-union from being a union person. And I was talking to him and I go, why don't you guys just suspend your, your pay raise for 12 months? Why, why would we do that? I go, I was in, in an organization that had 27,000 members. The state was having a hard time. We suspended it. We didn't give it, give it up, but we suspended it for, for actually 18 months. And, um, and the reason why was because we knew they were in bad shape and other people were, were suffering also. It sent a great message. It was great, great PR. Um, he told me afterwards, about six months later, he goes, now he sees what I meant. Um, and I think that's something as a, a group, do you guys ever have those conversations at times, uh, with the, your organizations that sometimes, hey, how about if we take a look at suspending this for 12 months and then we'll, we're not doing away with it. We're just going to delay it for 12 months more than suspend it. Um, and have you guys ever done that? Because I think it's a great tool and it really helps with PR for public and the other.
Um, I don't think so, just because a lot of our job, I think, deals with a lot of bureaucracy from other agencies too. And so oftentimes, things are on a set timeline. Um, I think the only time we like suspend things is for if we want to hear more public comment or um, if we want to research more about something, but it's not necessarily suspending an agenda item when we have the option to see it as an agenda item for three, um, three meetings. Um, I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it does. But we had timelines too. Our contracts were real clear on when we were supposed to get raises. But knowing from me being a union member, um, I went to a lot of training at, especially as a trustee, I went to training every year for the International Foundation. Um, you can always go back to a, a union, even though if you have timeframes due to circumstances and always bring stuff up. Um, that's why it's, it's something I, I was asking because I was curious. I haven't seen you guys do that, but I do know from experience that that can happen. That's why I wanted to kind of ask. It's working hand in hand with the union because it does help their, their, uh, civilian, uh, viewpoint, people, how people perceive them if, if they were to do that.
I'll also mention that with the union negotiations, that's all operational. And so that's for our staff. So we're more of the policy side.
But can't you kind of talk to your, the operational side and say, we'd like to do this? Or is that prohibited? Because the operational side works for the city council and can the city council bring up something like that? And I know I'm running out of time.
Uh, we trust our staff to be able to work with the union and have everybody on the same page and negotiate.
Okay. No, that's, that's, I figured I'd ask though.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Day.
Thank you for your time. I didn't mean to take all 30 minutes, but.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Farrell.
Good evening.
Oh. All right. Little odd to ask any of these questions, but please spend a few minutes to introduce yourself, why you are interested in hearing, we are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relevant to this position and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Okay. I'm Tom Farrell. I've been in Squim about eight years now. Uh, spent the last year, half of it out of the country, doing a lot of leadership training. I think, uh, the little resume I sent you covers the other activities. So, um, so I'm here to help if I can. And, uh, the experience on the city council has certainly enlightened me over the last four years, a lot of experience. And, um, I think we can, um, add something to it and give a good balance to the council.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, good evening. Uh, question two, what is your vision for this role? And how would you operationalize your vision?
Um, the vision for this role has been and always would be to apply as much objectivity to the issues that I can. I think that's very important regardless of my background or personal desires or pet projects, if you want to call it. My objective is to, uh, think as clearly as I can and be objective. I think, uh, in terms of, uh, judiciousness in a city council position is extremely important. And, um, regardless of my personal, personal beliefs or political beliefs, I try and force myself into that role.
Thank you. Good to see you, Tom.
Good to see you.
Glad you're back. Thanks for putting yourself out there again. So as you understand, we're going through a series of set questions.
Sure.
Um, you're being concise is appreciated. Are there any issues, areas that you are particularly passionate about?
Uh, I hate to repeat the word objectivity, but, uh, when I look at other, other issues in this city and many cities, uh, in terms of passion, in terms, in terms of a judicious approach, I would probably, uh, not push towards that passion, but I would try and give the objectivity to that, to those issues that come up. It's not an easy role to do that. Uh, but I think that's the best way I can serve the city.
How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, welcome opposing viewpoints and open dialogue?
Do you mean within the council activity?
Sure.
Sure. Well, I, I think, uh, whatever position you're in in the council, I think, uh, the first thing that I've tried to always understand is we're all humans and we actually like to communicate and talk and act human. And, uh, I think that's the best way is to assert who you really are to the other folks that you're dealing with, including citizens. Let them know who you really are.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
What legislative advocacy experience will you bring to Squim City Council? And how would you leverage this experience to foster growth and relationship building with legislators?
I've had some activities with the legislative leaders in the area, uh, different speaking engagements and, and meetings and so on. And And even if we had minor disagreements, we tended to be able to talk the issues over in terms of advocacy relative to advocates that we might have sitting in Seattle or wherever it is. I look for their guidance on that, as I always have in terms of what they think the strong, strong areas are in terms of the city getting involved in receiving support through that advocacy. The other advocacy is the, in my opinion, that I've experienced is the passion of the council. And when I say advocacy on the council, whether I disagree or agree with it, I want to know more about it. I think that's very important to do.
Hi, Tom. The irony of this question is not lost on me. Based on what you know of this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
By the way, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I haven't seen you in a few years.
I'm sure always some of you would know, but regardless of what leadership role you're in, you better have a, keep space for a little sense of humor. And I think that's very important. I think in my past experience in leadership and executive management, seriousness is a facial expression. You can actually have a very serious discussion with a smile. And I try and, I try and keep that, that going. I think that I love to debate. And debate, debate to me is coming from a point of objectivity, but heading towards one of the passions that you might have or another council member or another member of a group has. I think that's exciting to see that. And even if I disagree with it, I think it's just really important to enjoy listening to it and learning from other points of view.
Strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop and maintain successful partnerships and relations? And what were the key components of your success?
From a, from a lifetime, lifetime experience of in executive leadership and management, I've had to depend greatly on staff that works with me for me or I work for them. And again, the open collaboration seems to, to be the best way to get things done. I think, again, getting back to and that includes staff here, it's very important to, to understand what they're going through and appreciate that and be empathetic towards that. I think it's very, very important in any role that, I'll say it again, people really need to know who you are. And I think that my experience with government, not here in Squim, but federal and so on. So many people have such a facade. You don't really know how they're thinking and it's like a game that they play and it's just unhealthy. And I think most taxpayers and citizens probably notice that quite often in our federal and federal politics. So to avoid that, just let people know who I am. Best way to do it, business or politics.
Thanks, Tom. Question eight, what issues is our city facing now?
Dare I say shortage of housing, but I think every city's certainly has situations such as that, different challenges and different levels. Knowing Squim pretty well, I think one of the concerns I have here, not concerns, but challenges, is the economic development approach we take for the city. How do we, how do we grow the city? When we need people to live in all forms of housing, how do we grow the city? When tourists get upset when they see homeless people on the street, how do you deal with that? And I think that's some of our biggest challenges. Economic development is an overly used term. But basically, if you want to grow this city or any city and make it attractive and good for everyone, at least strive for that. It's a real challenge. That would include your focus on looking at how you're going to grow. Is it going to be clean energy, government, what's going to come in? What would you pursue? And I think that most cities could do that much better than they do.
How do you ensure that your decisions align with organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
Well, organizational goals, depending on where you are in the structure to begin with, whether it's on a council or a company, whether you're a company president or CEO. It really, when you establish those goals, how are the goals established? Are they done in a collaborative manner? Someone's got to make a decision sometime. And through my experience, when, when the collaboration occurs, someone still has to make a choice or in your case, make a vote. And I think that's important to understand. The organizational structure of a company watches you when you're making those decisions. And they're not really looking for wishy washy or indecisive thinking. They're looking for clarity from you. I always, one of my, when I teach some of my courses, I always lead and talk about an example of, it's kind of a humorous example, but if you want to know what your boss really likes when you're in his, his or her office, see what book they have on their desk and go buy the book. But there's ways that you can, you know, really understand through collaborative methods to really come up with the best decision.
And the last question, do you have any questions for us?
No. Just so you know, I've had a busy year. And and it had to be done. And so I staying on board would have led to me missing half the year. So it seemed like the council was in position with the new election, that it seemed like it was a good time to finish up what I had to do. That's not done yet, but I'm done with it because I have other people doing it. So I've delegated, so. Yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lewis, thank you for joining us this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. Please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us. We are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relative to this position and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Could you say that again, please?
Please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us. We are interested in hearing highlights of your experience relative to this position and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Well, first of all, I was born in the Pacific Northwest and spent most of my youth in Port Angeles. And prior to my business career, I spent a lot of time in Squim. I was very active in sports from Port Angeles. And then after that, I went to Western Washington University. And after that, served the United States Naval Reserve and got my honorable discharge. And then I entered my professional career. And my professional career was as an electrical manufacturer representative, sales agent for 20 plus manufacturers. Primarily involved in all construction and development of the entire communities that I was living in and around the local areas. So I've got a huge experience in all of the development of existing community improvements. Schools, roads, military facilities, everything you could possibly think of. I was involved in the design, the budgeting, and the education of the workers and a huge vast knowledge of all new construction as well as preserving the existing and then developing new concepts for new projects for the communities. Later on in my career, I expanded my business. I owned my own business and had a staff of many people and started in Seattle. And did that for many years. I worked with the mayors, the governor, the lieutenant governor, Department of Transportation, the PUDs, city of Seattle. Everyone you can possibly think of in design, maintenance, and upgrades of all the electrical. Electrical is primarily involved in every project there is. Whether it's the upgrades with wire and cable to build things, or whether it's to use the fasteners that go inside of the building. I was involved in everything. So 20 plus manufacturers allowed me to really see every possible facet of construction. And the results of what it did for the communities. After a number of years in Seattle, I expanded to Hawaii and spent the remainder of my professional career there. And in Hawaii, I was heavily involved with all the military bases as well because they needed a lot of upgrades. So I had a lot of experience in helping them upgrade their systems and to also help the state improve their roadway systems, which they still haven't completed my major project that I did the light rail system over there. I was involved in the design and the first portion of that. It's still not finished, but it's a huge accomplishment for me personally. I have many things to look at that I was involved in helping to create. So that's one of the main reasons why I want to give back to the community because I guess the most rewarding part of my life was to see the creation for the community that improved the quality of life of everyone. And now I take a look at my roots. Where are my roots? My roots are up here in the peninsula. And I have such fond memories of Port Angeles and Squim. I used to be in all the parades down here. I was a member of a unicycle club in Port Angeles during my youth. And we were the only unicycle club of the United States that actually had a dance routine. I used to be in the Squim parades all the time. It was a lot of fun. And so I have my son and his family live in Edmonds. And where could I possibly live that would be close to Edmonds that I would like compared to living in Hawaii? Then the only answer was Squim. So my wife and I moved over to Squim. We have three grandchildren that are very dear to our heart and we adore them and we spend a lot of time with them. They come over here, we go over there. But I have such fond memories of Squim. I wanted to be involved if it was possible to help with my vast experience to help new projects. I realize the process of going through the committees and the approval process of budgeting and the input from the people, from the citizens, and wanted to give back and give me purpose because I have so much to offer with my experience. And I've always been a team member. I've never been a lone wolf. I've always been part of a team. Representing 20 plus manufacturers gave me this vast capability to get along with the most anyone. And to always see the positive side, never get involved in the negative side, try to work out on common ground. So I think I can add a lot to the city. I love this town. I don't plan on leaving. And I think that I would be a huge asset to the council because I really care about what you're doing and where we're headed. And if I can be of benefit, I think it would be a good move for everyone. And that's probably about the bulk of where I'm coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennison. Question two, what is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
Operationalize for projects or for what?
For city council. As a city council member, what is your vision for the role of a city council member? How would you operationalize your vision?
Well, I think I think I first of all, I would like to be a major part of where do we fit to help with the budget that we have to work with for the community. In other words, you know, it'd be nice to build a big new hospital somewhere or a facility like that, but that's not really realistic. I would like to be a part of giving experience on what is capable to do with the budgets that are available. I'm not a, I'm not really a bean counter, but I am a a very good budget analyzer on what it requires to do infrastructure and to build anything new or to fix anything that needs repair. So I guess operationally, I would think I would give valuable input on how we would approach all the different challenges that come to you guys that the the people of Squim and the county want done.
Thank you so much. We'll go for question three over here.
Thank you. And thanks for coming in and putting yourself out like this. Third question, are there any issues, and this is relative to your role on city council that you're particularly passionate about?
No, I don't. I don't think so, except for realistic, realistic vision on what it entails to do a brand new project. I think that's really something I understand. I think that I could give valuable input to prioritize which projects would be more beneficial to the entire community. So everyone in this council should have input that we all discuss and then come to a conclusion. But I could give a lot of experience knowledge that maybe people that haven't been around as much as I have have seen. So it would be valuable for you to realize like, like this project in Honolulu that I am in was involved, not now. But that was a gigantic project. It entailed a lot of different facets from the city to the county to the state. And I was involved in the design, budgeting, and actual implementation of the contractors involved. So I guess that's what I would say. My value would be in giving you input on newer projects.
How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, welcome opposing viewpoints, and open dialogue?
How do I do that? That's I listen. I listen a lot. And I'm always, you know, my background of of working with 20 plus manufacturers and always having various bosses all the time, regional managers, national sales managers, plant managers, everything else. And I always had to go to these type of meetings and sit down and actually see what works, what doesn't work, and what is a windfall, what isn't. So I think that I have a capability of listening to everyone's honest views. I really do. That's a strong point that I have.
What legislative advocacy experience will you bring to Squin City Council? And how would you leverage the this experience to foster growth and relationship building with legislators?
Oh, with legislators in Olympia, you mean? Yeah, that's good. Well, I've got a vast experience of dealing in not only in Olympia, but more recently in Honolulu with with all of the people in the state capital, lieutenant governors, mayors, even the governor himself and all the various Department of Transportation people. So the legislators, I did attend meetings like that at the at the Capitol previously. And I think I have a really great ability to relate, adapt, and listen to their input and provide them honest views of what our community does need. And I realize the people down Olympia, they have a lot of things to do. They have a lot of things on their plate. But if it's presented in the right manner with someone that has the best experience of of expertise and various projects that they've done, they tend to listen.
Question number six, based on what you know of this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
That's good. That's a good question. I think the best answer I could give is to be open minded with all of the various inputs from either this panel, the people, the realization of budgets available and the vision of what we want Squim to be 10 years from now. I think that based on your input and your vision, I think that I provide a lot of a lot of valuable experience on what works and what doesn't work in terms of attacking which projects are valuable and which ones are not.
So strong relationships are a key element of success. Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop, and maintain successful partnerships and relationships? And what were the key components of your success?
I think the best way I could explain that, Brandon, would be I was a manufacturer's representative for 20 plus major manufacturers for many years. And you don't know this, but I'll let you know this. As this independent sales agent, you only have 30 day contracts with every one of those manufacturers. Any 30 day period, you can be terminated. That's the way the rules are. And I did this for 30 plus years. So, and I never, ever had a disagreement or a situation to where the manufacturer said, I don't like what you're doing. I don't think we're gonna do the, you're out. I have never had that experience. So my point to you in saying that is the fact that I always know there's a way to either work it out, negotiate it out, or listen to the other person's point of view and come to a mutual agreement. So I don't think that I caused any conflicts in people's wishes or visions. I can only provide positive input. So whatever, whatever thing there is happening, I think that the bond keeps growing. So I provide stability. Does that answer your question or not?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dennison. Question eight, what issues is our city facing now?
We need more money for one thing. So how do you do that? You're gonna have a levy, a levies proposed right now for the schools and stuff like that. So I, I think that we need, we really do need to look at the, at the realistic financial capabilities of what Squim has to work with. And how do we grow that budget? I think we grow that budget by many different marketing concepts to the citizens and to the various groups that are involved in business. I think one thing we could do is to provide more incentives for some of the businesses, independent businesses to want to be involved in the growth of Squim. I don't think anyone's really gone out and done a sales job for the independent businesses. I think that that could be a segment that would develop more funding to be able to work with. That's one idea. And the other thing is that we need to be, I think you're very open with the public in terms of letting them know what, what significant projects are needed. But we don't really do a good job in letting the citizens know the concept of what we could be doing five years from now. We, we have opportunities to get a lot of new people moving to Squim, especially from California. Because of the fires and everything else that's going on down there. So the single family dwellings, that's one area we could really push on to get more support. These developers or builders and people like that, we could be involved in trying to get more support from the contractors in, in providing more financial aid to the city for future growth, for projects. Maybe there's a, there's a place over on, or is that over by the dog park? An independent, I don't know what his name was, but he built a little playfield for the children out of his own money. I ran into him at a public affair, wherever that was, I forgot. But anyway, he spent his own money to build this playfield for children because he felt that the children didn't have enough playfields to be at to keep them safe. So he's got merry go round, he's got slides, he's got all this other stuff. It's on Brown Street. And I drive by there often. And every time I drive by, even when it's raining, there's kids playing in there. So it's really, it's really a good example of what one person could do if he had a desire to do it. So some of these independent business people have available funds that we could try to tap into, to do more projects for the city of Squim. And that may be an avenue that we haven't really tapped into. That's one idea, anyway.
Thank you again. Question nine, how do you ensure that your decisions align with the organization's goals and objectives? And can you provide an example of a decision that you made that directly contributed to achieving?
By organization, do you mean the council or what?
This would be more out of your, your background. So if you work in an organization that has goals and so on, how do you ensure that your decisions align with the organization? And then if, if you have an example of?
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's a good question. I think the, I think the best way to answer that is the fact that since I was involved in primarily construction related products and maintenance type products, I think that the objective was to always keep in mind that you're trying to provide the solution for the immediate challenge. And by doing that, not only does it solve the challenge, but it also provides you a door opener for future growth for that particular customer. Whether it was a school district, I can remember Kamehameha Schools, which is a very high quality private school system in Honolulu. I spent a lot of time with those people. At first it started with solving some critical problems that they had in their electrical systems. And then it developed into new ways of monitoring their electrical usage. So it was way more efficient. Then they were able to build new structures. And then they were able to grow and the whole thing multiplied. So for me personally, my objective, my objective, my objective is to always try to find the solution that provides an opener for future growth.
All righty, last question. Do you have any questions for us?
I do. But just by looking at all of your faces, you know, for, for me, I've, I owning my own business for many years, I have to make snap decisions based on what I see. And every one of your faces provide me with a, an effect of calmness and you really care about this community. I really, I really see that. And that's, that's very significant to me. I need to have purpose. I know I have purpose as a grandfather now. But I really have so much vast experience. I want it to be valuable for future growth and for the community that I love to develop into something even more special. I think Squim is extremely special. So look at your faces. You really care. And I feel that way. And I think I would be very proud to be part of your team. I've always been a team player. And I think that that's critically important. And I think just by you talking to me, each one of you individually, I can see that you're very cooperative. You're not confrontational. You really do care. And I could be a major asset, I think, to that. And we could be a strong, strong team. And maybe I could provide things that you haven't thought of in, in the past, but we could work together as a fantastic team. That's what I think. I don't have any other questions. Your, your backgrounds, your business backgrounds, I, I don't know what they are. But for me personally, I don't think that is entering into my thinking, my, my decision making, because your role as a city council member to me means that you care about the community and you want it to be better than it is today, better than it will be tomorrow and keep on going. And I want to be part of that. That's how I feel. No, no questions other than that.
Thank you, Dennison.
Thank you.
That's all?
Those are all the questions, yes.
Paper to Heather, to the city clerk that describes my professional career and my personal career itself. I want you to understand that I'm, I'm very sincere about this and I really want to be part of your team. Okay? And thank you very much for allowing me to be here. And thank you for your consideration.
Get some more shows coming up. We're gonna have to take a half. Theater.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Hi, nice to see you again.
Yep, thank you. All right. Question one, please spend a few minutes introducing yourself to us.
Okay.
We are interested in hearing your, hearing highlights of your experience relative to this position and why you are interested in being a Squim City Council member.
Well, first it was the pay that drew me. I understand it's thousands of dollars a week. So anyhow, no, you might recall I did interview last April. And so if you remember that, I've seen all of you again. I'm in much better health than the last time. Anyhow, my name is William Stone, as you know, and I've been a resident of the Northwest over 28 years and a resident of Squim area, almost exactly five years, though technically speaking, only four years inside city limits. Spent the first year in Sunland. So I guess that doesn't count. I still work for Costco at our corporate office. Been there over 28 years in the IT field, mostly compliance and security, among other things. Let's see, what can I tell you about myself? I've worked in a lot of different industries over the years. I've worked in construction as a construction manager, I've been a restaurant manager. I've, I worked, sold lumber. I've, you know, worked for a Home Depot like company in San Diego. So a variety of different experiences, which sort of bring me to my, my point today. I'm getting toward the end of my, my Costco career. Driving to Issaquah every single week is not ideal, especially when the weather's like this. But I'm a big believer in giving back to my community. And that's one of my prime motivations is to give back to the city I live in. You know, I moved out here purposely when COVID hit and they shut down the corporate office. And Squim has always been on my radar screen as a place to retire for a lot of reasons. You know, the weather, the community, small town, love it. But I'm not content to sit home and, you know, or play golf or whatever. But I want to give back and I see a lot of opportunities here. There are a lot of challenges for Squim and we can cover that with your questions. But yeah, it, it, my primary motivation is, is to give back. And I think my varied work experiences, working for a multi billion dollar company all the way down to a multi million dollar company or smaller. I have a lot of background in working with all sorts of different groups of individuals from different parts of the country. So I think I can bring a lot to the table in that respect. Unless you want more personal history, I can tell you about the log cabin I was born in, but we can skip that.
That sounds like a fascinating story. And maybe another time, let's move on to question two.
Sure.
What is your vision for this role? How would you operationalize your vision?
That is an excellent question because I have been in the business sector for almost my entire life. You know, I have volunteered at various organizations. I lived in the city of North Bend for many years and I would help out at various city events, but you know, I was a volunteer. So I recognize that government does operate a little differently. So I recognize that government does operate a little differently than private business, of course. But in terms of operationalizing my, my role here. You know, of course, the council serves at, at the behest of our people, our voters, now the people who live here. And that is a mindset that, believe it or not, at Costco, we haven't forgotten. We know we have a slogan at Costco is when a warehouse calls, drop everything. So in other words, you know, we recognize that our members and our warehouses are what really drives our business. So analogous to that, you might say the same thing here. So, but I think my role would be to. Listen, I think that's the hardest part for anyone, any kind of position of authority and or. Running some organization is sometimes hard to hear through the chatter, what people are really asking. And I see my ability in dealing with a lot of different people over the years. And, and listening to what they have to say is one of the primary operational goals I would have. In terms of day to day, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I know every minute what you guys do for, for a living here. But it is about understanding what's being offered. It's about understanding our budget, what the goals of the city management is, the goals of the voters. It's also very political by nature. And so you have to deal with the politics of people and individuals. So I, I think it's a great opportunity to wear a lot of hats. And so. I think it's, I can say it's mostly about listening and communicating and try to come to, you know, an agreement, understanding. Having said that, the operation part of it is sometimes making decisions that are not popular. But the council, I don't need to tell you guys, you have information that maybe the average person in town does not have. And you have to make the best decisions for everyone involved. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Question three, are there any issue areas that are particularly, that you are particularly passionate about? This would be more general, not necessarily specific to the city. It could be, but.
Oh, okay.
Issues.
Is it in general?
In general.
Okay, so I'll try to segue from the Squim specific. Okay.
That'll come up later.
Yeah, I had a feeling they would. Well, I don't need to tell anyone here that. Government has been a little dysfunctional over the last several years. No matter what side of the aisle you're sitting on, it's been very frustrating to watch. So one of the things I've been passionate about is. Trying to get people to get along better. Now that sounds a little stereotypical, I guess, maybe pie in the sky. But I am passionate about opening dialogue again. I think we've gotten away from the art of dialogue. There was a time, many years ago now, when Reagan was president. And, but you know, whether you agree with him or not, he would frequently meet with Tip O'Neill, who was the Speaker of the House, and they were on different sides of the aisle. But it was that working together. And that's what I'm passionate about. And I really think that's one of the biggest issues facing us as a society. We've sort of forgotten how to get along and, and listen and, and agree to disagree. And you know, those type of things and everything is just so volatile now. So I think, Dan, that's probably my, one of my biggest passions. Of course, it does segue or tie into this, but yeah, it's very frustrating to watch people not get along.
Thank you.
You bet.
How do you provide guidance, foster creativity, welcome opposing viewpoints and open dialogue?
I find putting my head in the sand works best. So I, no, no, no. Well, you know, I've had a lot of different roles. I'm currently on the board at our local theater here and. I'm a board member there. I'm also Vice President of HOA in Jenny's Meadow. And in the past, I ran a nonprofit in Snoqualmie. So a lot of different roles there. And of course, at Costco, every day I'm dealing with people that don't necessarily agree with me. So how do I go about that? It depends on the situation and the audience, obviously. It also depends how volatile the situation is. I mean, there was a time. I was a restaurant, a fast food restaurant manager in Tucson, Arizona, many, many years ago. And I had a customer threatening to reach across the counter and beat me off because I gave him a small fry instead of a large fry. So there's different types of individuals. Luckily, I managed to talk him out of that. But my, my approach has always been to. Try to keep the dialogue open. And I just mentioned that, you know, one of my passion about, well, I have to sort of walk the talk. And I have found that usually in most cases, if you listen to the other person, repeat back what they have to say. And try to come to understanding what their viewpoint is, you can sometimes come to an agreement, not always. But I found out the most effective over the years in different roles I've had, you know, either as a president of a board. Or as a, as a board member in theater, I mean, there's all the very different audiences versus an HOA versus a theater versus, you know, another nonprofit. But that has served me well over the years is, is trying to listen to people and. Trying to come to an agreement. Again, I don't want to keep painting this picture like, you know, it's, it's always going to work, you know, sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes you just have to either go and move forward, get a majority opinion, or, or just. You know, you need to move forward. But that has served me the best over the years.
What legislative advocacy experience will you bring to the city of Squim or the Squim City Council? And how would you leverage that experience to foster growth and relationship building with legislators?
Okay, so I'm not going to sugarcoat it. I mean, I've never worked in, for a legislature or a city directly. I volunteer with the city of North Bend and I participate in various fundraising activities over the years. I lived there 25 some years. And some of my friends were on the North Bend City Council. But I don't have any direct experience. So my, my collaboration, collaboration and team building and growth. Has come from getting, you know, pulling disparate groups of people together. Now, when it comes to Squim, you know, we are a smaller community. And there are certain legislative processes and process you have to go through. I'm not going to pretend it's not different than running a business or being in a business or running a board or any of those type of things. But I think there are similarities and I think I can bring. Cooperation and dialogue. Now, there are rules, Robert's Rules of Orders, there's all these types of things you have to go through. And I've always enjoyed that structure, you know, and running my own boards. It provides a structured way of communicating and I appreciate that. But I can't sit here and tell you that I, you know, was in Olympia for two years or I was in Washington DC for five or any of that kind of stuff, but.
Question number six, based on what you know of this position, what skills or qualities do you believe are needed for someone to be successful in this role?
Right, thank you. I think I've already touched on some of it, but I. I think keeping an open mind, getting a lot of different opinions, you know. We have a very strong opinion public here. Anyone who doesn't want the, the stuff built behind Costco there to, you know, the drug center versus people who want or welcoming unlimited growth. To people who don't want to build a new housing development down by John Wayne to, I mean, there's a lot of different opinions out here and they're very strong opinions. So to answer your question. The skills you have to bring are an ability to, again, I'm going to sound redundant, listen. But you need to put those things in action. You have to be willing to serve time, you have to be willing to listen, but you have to listen to your fellow council members and you have to. Move forward with legislation plans, you need to meet with vendors, you need to meet with. Budgetary people, you need to meet with lawyers, you know, legal people, the police. I mean, there's all sorts of different hats you have to wear on the council. Because I'm preaching to the choir here, you guys all know that. But. I recognize that you have to manage those relationships because Squim is growing. Whether you like it or not, it is a growing community and there's a lot of reasons for it. We all love it and it's a great place to live. And it's the worst kept secret. A lot of people are moving here. So. It is imperative as a skill set that we, that we manage this growth by, by working with all those people I've already mentioned. City management, law enforcement, legal, Olympia, you know, wherever it may be, the federal government. I mean, there's all sorts of people we have to work with. And I think it's incumbent upon this council to keep that open mind and try to. The best they can to work with all these people and at the same time, listen to our constituents.
Strong relationships are a key element of success.
Yes.
Can you give us an example of an experience that will demonstrate your ability to create, develop. And maintain successful partnerships and relations? And what were the key components of your success?
Well, besides the guy that wanted to beat my head in for this small fry versus a large fry. I mean, he did get a free hamburger out of me. I took care of that. But in terms of long lasting, I never saw him again. I've had several of those over the years, you know, working at Costco or working on various boards. I think one, maybe a quick example I can give you. So I was a president of a nonprofit based in Snoqualmie. We call it Black Dog, Black Dog Arts Coalition. But it was basically to, you know, raise awareness for the arts in the Snoqualmie Valley. And it was a pretty large board, we had 11 members and, but we didn't always agree on things. There was in particular something to do with. The theater and how we were funding the theater part of the program and. It was getting tough, you know, the person running that, that program was really strongly just agreeing with how the rest of the board saw things. And I used all the skills I could muster, as I already described, you know, trying to work with that person, listening to what they had to say. You know, I was pretty close to it because I'd also been an actor on stage and so I'd actually worked with this person in several different capacities. But eventually it got to a point where we had to move forward. You know, there was two abusing, opposing viewpoints. And, and the way I handled as president, I mean, I'm not a dictator, so I, I canvassed the board, we had conversations, I provided documentation. And we came to a decision. Now this theater person unfortunately did not agree with it and she ended up resigning. But we were able to maintain our friendship and because we handled it as best we could in a professional manner. So that's, you know, that, it doesn't always work out the way you want it to. You know, our theater program took a little bit of a right turn and we brought someone else in. But that's an example where I had to use my skills to sort of bring the board together and get a decision made. And even though it didn't turn out necessarily the way. The other person wanted, we were able to maintain, you know, a working business and actual personal friendship after. So.
Thank you. Question number eight, what issues is our city facing now?
It's perfect. There are no issues. Well, there, there are a lot, you know, like I said, I've lived in this area now five years and. Infrastructure and traffic, I'll call it what's called infrastructure, it's not just about traffic, but that's impacted. That is, that's, you know, we all notice that driving down Washington at 3:30 in the afternoon. That's why I love Spruce Street. So yeah, infrastructure, our schools are underfunded, our schools are in trouble. Housing is, is an issue. Housing is very expensive and it's hard to retain. People that can actually work and live here, if housing is so expensive and, and, and limited, there's not a lot of housing choices. There's ongoing concerns with, with the reservation, learning to work with the people, the reservation. Working with the state to maybe get one-on-one and expanded. Let's see where else. I don't know, can we control the weather? No, we can't. But it does, we have, you know, water shortages because of growth. And last and certainly not least is growth. I mean, people are moving here from California, from Seattle, from everywhere. We have a proposed housing development down by John Wayne, as you're all aware. That's going to bring several hundred more people in. Do we have the infrastructure to support that today? And I, no, I don't think we do. So how do we get that infrastructure? How do we make sure, how do we ensure there's water for everybody now and in the future? How do we make sure our schools are up to speed? And one of the things that sort of hit close to home for me is I went through some of my, my medical stuff a few months ago is, is medical care. I don't know if this council can address medical care directly, but I believe if we have a viable, a viable. City that people want to live in, that that also might attract more doctors. Which, you know, they all go hand in hand. So yeah, those are some of the major issues, I think, you know, schools, infrastructure, growth. Those are the biggies. And I could probably talk all day just about driving down Washington at 3:30 in the afternoon.
But the lights are synchronized now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question nine, how do you ensure that your decisions align with our organizational goals and objectives? Can you provide an example of a decision you made that directly contributed to achieving those goals?
Okay.
This is more city focused.
Oh, okay. Well, first of all. Making sure that I was in step with, with, with the goals of the city obviously would require participation with the council, but not just, you know, showing up for council meetings. It involves, you know, meeting people. And I apologize, I don't know how, if each council member has a certain part of the city, like, like a district. But if not, then just meeting constituents on a base, on a regular basis, you know, for coffee. I know you have, you know, open houses, you know, those type of things, but I think that's very important. And of course, just getting together as a, as a board. I mean, I'm sure you guys get together and discuss things and. And that's also important to make sure you're on the right track. Listening to city management, I guess would be a good one. But. In my personal example, I'm trying to think of a great example. Let's see, so at, in Costco for the last several years, I've been part, in part of the IT. Division. And within that, I was part of the international team because we have this team that helps manage our international Costco locations. And they need a lot of help and a lot of decisions were being made and. Let's see how I say this. My, my focus was on IT compliance and security, making sure Costco data is protected. Even whether it's in China or Japan or Mexico or UK, whatever, right? And I have some strong opinions and experience in that area and, and management doesn't always agree with that. And so. You, you have a lot of meetings and you try to discuss these things and, and you, you present the information as best you can. But you have to, you have to keep it from being too personal. You have to present facts as well as you know them. And in some cases, and I'm sorry, I can't give you a very specific example, but. I was able to persuade management to maybe take a second look at something in a, in a compliance area that they hadn't considered before. Because I was able to present, in this case, it was a PowerPoint. I was able to demonstrate why this particular country couldn't adhere to what the management wanted to do until this country got something else in line. If that makes sense. So it was, it was me gathering the information I needed and presenting it in a way that. Management understood where I was coming from and I was able to persuade them to wait or delay their. Installation of software.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I can't be more specific, but, okay.
And the last question, do you have any questions for us?
Yes. Where do we see, okay, I know we're growing, but would you, would you guys feel about annexation or increasing? City boundaries to help raise, you know, revenue tax dollars? Has that been discussed or what is the thoughts on that?
I think there hasn't been much active talk on these annexation wise, I don't think. I know there's some. Annexation talk on the wind possibly coming up, but I think possibly with the. Comprehensive plan and whatever growth management act changes come up about with the state. In the future, there might be some. I know Squim's boundaries are a hot mess.
Yeah.
Islands all over the place. So we could definitely use some work. But I think, you know, containing. But I think, you know, containing, you know, urban sprawl and everything like that. It's possible something like that definitely needs to be looked into in the future.
Definitely, definitely, thank you.
I'd add to that by the addition of revenue would be a, you know, an important benefit.
Yep.
But hopefully not what Brandon said, just continuity of infrastructure services. When you've got all sorts of places you can't provide service, you have to go around, whatever.
Right, or you're at the behest of the county or something.
Exactly, so it's, that continuity of services would be as high or higher priority than trying to convince a community that isn't annexed to come into the city.
We need your tax dollars, you know, I understand.
Probably not the leading argument.
No, I suppose not. So, so I know we talked about infrastructure and, and schools. How do you guys feel about the, the influence of this council then in terms of, of our schools helping them, you know, to get fiscally viable again or, you know, what, how do you see some of the steps there?
Well, the school board is a separate entity.
Right.
And so in terms of, of legal responsibility, there's a pretty strong boundary there. But we recognize this was demonstrated at our last meeting, special meeting, that the school system is integral to Squim's, the city of Squim's success.
Oh, definitely.
In ways that we probably don't have that level of partnership with, with any other adjacent jurisdiction.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's probably as much as I should say on that.
You, you raised an excellent point, which you guys have asked me about, you know, how do you, how do you work with individuals? You don't necessarily have direct control over, and that's the county, that's the school board. And so now I was going to ask about the future of water. Well, I mean, I don't think it's within your purview to, you know, dig a reservoir. But how do you, how do you see how this council can sort of influence your water rights or water retention for years to come? I mean, how, what does that, what does that look like?
Well, we do have a really informational fact sheet on our website about water usage and water reserves for the next, I want to say like 30 plus years.
Okay.
So there's been a lot of misinformation about water and we do not have any water issues or water shortages.
That's good, because there hasn't been a lot of, some of my friends live in the county and they have wells, so I hear it.
The city does have a seat at the table for, there was recently a meeting that involved county representatives, PUD, different water system operators in the city and Sunland and a variety of entities that need to all have a seat at the table to kind of figure out.
Got it.
How to balance this in the county.
Okay, excellent, thank you. I'm thinking down to three minutes, so just, just generally, one of the topics near and dear to my heart. What are some of the, and you, you talked about, you know, plans are already in action. I've been reading your newsletters, I know you guys have been discussing this, but what do you see are some preliminary first steps to maybe ease traffic? Like, you know, I don't know, more right turn lanes, more traffic circles, I mean, what are some of the, the ideas here?
We are working, we have a budget to work on the updating the, the traffic lights. And we have been working over the last few years, updating and getting them aligned. And I think the next purchase is, and you know, I'm not a technological person at all, is, is boxes to help with the traffic flow better, map priority more. So we are, it's part, we have a, we have a capital improvement plan and a transformation, transportation improvement plan. And so based on where we can find money, what we already have money for. When you asked about the schools, I was thinking that one of the big things that we've been working on is safe routes to schools. And so if you go down Washington, all of that was the city, you know, trying to build a safe route to school. And then the school board comes and tells us, so once our kids get to school, then they're not safe anymore, so. But we can still provide the infrastructure to get in there safely.
Right, right, well, I appreciate the answer, thank you. It's, yeah, and I mean, there's a lot of issues surrounding that and I know you guys have your hands full, but I'm glad you're, you're working on it. Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that I think it all ties very closely into the comp plan in terms of making sure that everyone has made their intentions and their vision known through the process. And that's the whole point, so that everybody can feel that they're represented. And that comes, that, that touches on every single issue you, you mentioned or the questions that you asked us. So just that, that's going to be a really important process and it's all coming up later this month with the, with the, uh, the SCJ, the comp plan retreat.
Oh.
And the, I'm trying, I'm fishing for the fancy word for the people that handle all that, the consultant, oh my gosh. So the consultant, they've been doing so much great work and it's going to be great to see what they've put together. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you for that answer, so. Well, thank you guys, I see we're out of time, but I look forward to hearing from you. So next Monday, right, that's when you do your, the vote thing again, okay? Six o'clock, right, okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, planning, Thursday, five o'clock, we got two. Yep. All right, then Monday, five o'clock for the executive session and then six o'clock, regular meeting. Then it's that time of the hour. Move to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Let's go home.